Good morning and welcome to the June 11th Commission Meeting. Please stand for the pledge allegiance led by Mr.
Perpekis, thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, John. Just a reminder to silence your cell phones and the meeting documents are next to Commissioner Kelly over there in the binder. And if you need a listening device, Robert will help you with that. I'll get started with routine business.
Item one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
We have a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any corrections or changes? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item two is to approve the county commission minutes of June 4th, 2013.
A motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in two seconds to approve the minutes. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item three.
Are bills to be paid the amount of $290,871.80.
Motion to defer two payments.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to defer two payments.
Do we need to list them?
Yes, we do need. Otherwise, we'll have to go through and cherry pick them.
I have to find the page. I apologize. I kind of carried away. Do you have it right there, John?
I have one at 15377, a subscription for the Economist magazine under the auditor, page three. And there's another one.
I have it here. It's 15347 under the auditor for next to new phone repairs, just until there's further investigation on those two bills.
That's what my second was.
Okay. I want to make sure. If you'd just give us those numbers again because I had 1537 for both.
Oh, 15347 for next to new wireless and I think next to.
15377 for the Economist newspaper.
Okay, so everybody understand those two? We have a motion to approve the bills with those two eliminated. Those in favor of approving the bills to be paid, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Do we need a motion now to approve the rest of the bills?
Yes.
That's my motion.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the balance. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Thank you.
Item four, reports. A is the Minnehaha County Sheriff's Department report for May 2013. And item B is the Minnehaha County Human Services report for May 2013. Those have been filed in the auditor's office. Item five is personnel. A is a motion to approve the routine action.
Good morning, Carrie. Is there a motion to approve routine action?
To approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve routine action. Any questions? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Item B is consider a request to authorize an additional human resources generalist position in the human resources department and authorize recruitment and hiring. Carrie Dever.
Good morning.
Good morning again.
How are you doing?
Good.
I have a request for you this morning to consider allowing our office to hire one additional human resources generalist. There's really four reasons for the request. The first comes down to expanded responsibilities and what we're currently doing. We've had an increase in turnover and recruitment, benefits issues, so we're experiencing more workload there. The other three items really come down to an increase in responsibilities outside of what we've been normally doing. We're planning to expand some safety initiatives, looking into more pre-employment screening and testing. Healthcare reform is bringing additional responsibilities to our office and as you know, we're taking on responsibilities for Lincoln County's resources, for human resources.
Thank you, Carrie. Anyone else have any questions for Carrie or comments?
Mr. Chair, just.
Yeah, Commissioner Barth.
Carrie, how many employees down in Lincoln County?
Just approximately 100 full-time with additional.
So then we have another 500 up here, right?
That's correct.
So your office is now managing a workforce considerably larger than previously.
Yes, it is.
Just to comment if I might, we appreciate your hard work in taking on this new responsibility. When we considered it, obviously, we're trying to make government as efficient as possible and your expertise for them, I know, is important because we've had some very positive feedback from them. We are billing them for your time and your staff's time and we do appreciate the cooperation between the two forms of government, so thank you for making that happen.
And that's a good point. Obviously, half the request is being covered by those Lincoln County funds and it really has presented us with an ideal situation. We have additional needs in our office. It's a perfect fit with Lincoln County's staffing needs as well.
Well, and you need to know too that we do appreciate your hard work because I do know that you put in extra time and frankly, we get positive feedback from Lincoln County, so thank you for doing that.
Well, thank you. I'll pass that to my staff, too.
Commissioner Kelly?
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. A motion and a second. Any other questions, comments? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
There are no application for abatement and there are no notices and requests or planning and zoning notices and there are no petition for compromise of lien today. The next item is opportunity for public comment.
This is an opportunity for anyone who would like to speak about any item that is not on the agenda. Yes, sir. Please come forward and give us your name and address.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Tim Shendel. I live at 5405 West 23rd Street here in Sioux Falls. For the last five and a half years, I've served as Minnehaha County's representative on the Siouxland Heritage Museums Board. And last year and this year, I've served as the chair of that board. So I'm here on behalf of the museum board to talk about the donated land that Bob and Kari Hall provided to the county. It would be up on the northwest part of town, immediately above the area that Sanford is now building the Pentagon and other facilities on. The Halls donated that land several years ago with the sole intention of having that serve as a collection center for the museums and to remove the items that are currently stored in the old courthouse and in the pedigree museum and place them in storage in an environmentally-controlled facility and in a manner that allows for growth in the collection but also allows for preservation and conservation of those items because they are not at this time in any type of situation where they are controlled with either humidity or heat or in the case of the water main break that happened beginning of this year from water damage from items that were in the basement. The Halls generously donated 24.97 acres of land to the county for that sole purpose as well as making a larger donation of land to Augustana College. Augustana then in turn sold that land that they were given to Sanford Health and Sanford's well into the completion of its own project. Augustana took the proceeds of its money and built Kirkabee Over Stadium and that's already been in use for the last couple of seasons. So the land that was donated to the county and to Augustana was given at the same time and Augustana's already in possession of a brand-new stadium that they've been in use. Sanford got possession of its land after Augustana and it's well on the way to completion of its. And the land that was given to the county is still pretty much bare ground where we're still spending county dollars to go out and mow the grass and mow the weeds down. The Halls very generously gave that land to the county for that sole purpose of that center. We have an architectural jewel that the county possesses in the old courthouse museum over here. I believe I heard Commissioner Hyburger mention that for the wedding her family member had this weekend that you took photos in that facility. That happens with dozens of groups throughout the year. The facility was not designed as a warehouse and that's essentially what the attic is. So the reason why I came today and my comments are, A, to invite you to come look at the facility. Please join with Bill Hoskins, the executive director. Take a tour of what that upstairs attic looks like. It was not designed to be a warehouse and that's the purpose that it's serving at this point. The city of Sioux Falls and Minnehaha County are jointly responsible for the museums and I personally believe that the city needs to take some action as well. And I personally approached several of the city council people and I'll continue to do The county, in my opinion, and I'll probably get in trouble saying this to the city people, but the county, in my opinion, has done more than the city has up to this point, but I don't want you to get discouraged and not continue with your efforts. We have a jewel over there. It's a jewel that could be lost through damage to that facility if the structure is allowed to deteriorate from storing all those items that was not designed to hold. There are three iconic images you see of this city and this county on any type of advertising. One would be the falls themselves, two would be St. Joseph's Cathedral, three would be the clock tower of the old courthouse museum. It is our responsibility to make sure that we give our children, our grandchildren and our great-grandchildren the same opportunities to enjoy such an architectural jewel that we have ourselves. So I hope that you will support the project. I know that you need equal support from the city and especially from the council because the administration of the city frankly is not behind it, but I hope that you will be behind this project and help get it off the ground. There are plenty of opportunities for sale of part of that property to fund the construction of this facility. The grant that was given by the Halls allows all but five acres to be sold. Even if it's not sold, a possible other solution would be a long-term lease to other tenants and I think there is one that would especially be interested in that property. So that's all I have today. Thank you for your time and please consider the museums as you look into your funding and your budget over the next several months.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Any other comments? You want to come forward and give us your name and address, please?
My name is Virgil Anderson. I live at 2805 West Delrich Drive. That's the part of the county, not the city, that's north on Kiwanis Avenue, a little notch, as it were, in the city. I'm also speaking on behalf of the museum board. I'd second what Tim had to say. I have a little different approach to it. I'm the city's nominee. I'm not too sure how that works, but I'm the city's nominee to serve on the board. I'm in my second term and I'm the vice chairman of the trustees. My father is by trade a blacksmith. He's 99 years old. The shop that he worked in all his life sits across the street from him. It was purchased by my grandfather from a blacksmith that lives in the house that my dad currently resides in. Part of the deal was that my grandfather had to remove it from the premises, so he took it across the street and backed it in and had it next to his house instead of the retired blacksmith's house. He did that in 1907, so he'd been in America for about eight years. When it came time to put it down, everybody was doing the let's set out some rocks to hold up the floor and the walls and everything will be fine program of building. Obviously, that's not a very long-term deal. So over the years, they had to put some roofing on it. My dad said, "Well, we're looking at the possibility of putting on rolled roofing," which is an asphalt type of roofing, and that was economical, but they could put on steel as well and they decided, boy, that was just too much. So they put on the rolled roofing because it was supposed to last for about 10 years and then they could address it then. It didn't last 10, it lasted about six, but then they addressed it at about 12. So through the years, there was some leaking. Obviously, the ground had frozen and thawed and there was some heaving of the walls, that sort of thing. I spent some time on that roof when I was in high school and I can tell you, it's not fun to fall through it because I did. Well, since my dad's pretty much demanded retirement, he hasn't spent much time in that shop and it's just continued to deteriorate. The last 15 years or so, I've tried to do some rescue things with some tarps on the roof to keep it so that it's weather tight, but there are some artifacts in there, things that are very valuable, that have historical significance to the community, to our family and to the farming industry, but the back end of the shop that was used for the wagon shop collapsed. Snow load, bad roof, leaked walls. The welding shop where all the acetylene welding activities were conducted, same thing happened. And I'm looking at the contents and saying, you know, the humidity and the amount of abuse that the weather has piled on that has definitely deteriorated. These are the things that we need to preserve. The area that's about a mile south of where I live has been developed, partly, at least the Augustana College portion of it has, and the site, the 26 acres that the Halls donated to us, has been prepared. So the rough grading is done, the street is down to rough level, but nothing else has happened. We're running out of space to store the stuff that is our legacy and our heritage. I know what's happened if you don't take care of it because I've been watching it all my life and I would encourage you, anything and everything that you possibly can, to move that project along because I'd much rather see some walls going up than grass growing on that site. So please give it your best. You owe it to our community, our county, our state and most importantly, our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Virgil. Any other comments or questions? I think we've been fairly open about our conversation in reference to this project is that it will be included in our budget process. It starts in June, it'll end toward the end of July, approved in September if I remember it. So it'll all be part of that capital improvement program, so we appreciate your input now, but there won't be any decision-making process until we get through our budget issues because we have three or four other projects that we're going to prioritize, but yours certainly will be part of that conversation. So we do appreciate your input now. Thank you for coming. Any other?
Mr. Chair, I guess I would concur with you and thank my fellow museum board members for coming today because I know that the board is pretty concerned about the way things have gone and I guess if any of us have any questions, you know, it would be a good time to ask them. I know when we had the joint meeting with the city, there were no questions from his honor, but then he later had 19 questions and I guess if someone has a question today, this would be, it seems to me, a reasonable time to ask the chairman of our board if there's an issue.
Well, my assumption is, Commissioner Barth, that we will get a written response from Bill Hoskins and from the board in reference to those questions at some time before the budget process starts, so.
Absolutely.
Those questions will be answered, I'm sure, in more detail and if you didn't get a copy of that note, which I'm assuming you did, we'd be happy to forward that to you, but at that point, then we'll have all the information that we need to make a decision, so.
The planned date is this coming Friday, 14th, so that those answers those questions back to Mr. Perpekis.
Okay, super. Thank you for that. Did not know the date. Any other comments or questions? If not, is there anyone else in the audience who would like to make any public comments about anything that's not on the agenda? No one else is coming forward, so we'll go to the next item, item number 10. Thank you.
For regular business, item 10 is a presentation of a proposal by Doherty and Company, LLC, to serve as financial advisor for Minnehaha County for refunding Series 2004 Limited Tax General Obligation Certificates of Participation. Tom Gremmern.
Good morning, Tom.
Good morning. Tom Gremmern from Doherty and Company, also 620 East 29th Street. All right, well, good morning. Thank you for having us this morning. Also with me is Ray Woodson, or Woody is most of you know him by. He's given me the task of leading this off and then he'll jump in when I forget something, I'm sure. So just thought we'd come in and give you a little information. There's been some changeover on the commission and just a little background about Doherty and Company and what Doherty and Company has done for the last number of years in South Well, South Dakota, Doherty's presence in South Dakota, presence in South Dakota has been, I guess we're missing a slide here. I got a second slide here. It's, you know, Doherty served in the public entities for over 34 years. We've had a, we've had a, Mike Doherty of Doherty and Company grew up in Sioux Falls, South Dakota and joined a firm, an investment banking firm, some years ago. And in his endeavors in Minneapolis, he noticed that North Dakota, South Dakota, Iowa, Minnesota was underserved by the large investment banking firms on the east coast and west coast. So he started a firm in 1977 to specifically serve organizations and entities issuers in South Dakota, North Dakota, Minnesota and this, the upper Midwest area. So that's really how Doherty got it started, 34-plus years ago. And of course, as soon as they invented the fax machine, which I can always tell whenever they invented the fax machine, pretty close to it at least when it was commercially used, is when Doherty's office in Sioux Falls opened. We were the first office to open up and that was over 29 years ago in South Dakota. We are the only firm, underwriting firm nationwide that has maintained an office in South Dakota. Some have come and gone, but have maintained an underwriting firm in Sioux Falls. And of course, I say underwriting, we've also done a tremendous amount of work in financial advising as a financial advisor from that office also. Ray Woodson's been in that office now for, Woody's been in that office now for 25 years and I've been there 21 years myself. From 1990 to 2012, Doherty has managed or co-managed in underwritings in the state of South Dakota over $4.8 billion. Our nearest competitors combined, our nearest four competitors combined do not equal that. And many of those competitors are national competitors that have underwritten housing deals or state deals that are large, $50 million to $100 million deals. The majority of our deals are small issuers like Minnehaha County, Sioux Falls, the surrounding areas, Sioux Falls School District and just the whole state. And the number of issues we've underwritten in the state is a large number of issues. It isn't just the larger state issues. Again, recent experience in South Dakota, we've got, we've had, we've served as the county's financial advisor in 2007, so we have served for the county as a financial advisor and the only firm in the country that has served for the county as a financial advisor. We also served the city of Sioux Falls as a financial advisor on the very successful $70 million Lewis and Clark funding. We had, when we were their financial advisor, we had over 10 bidders for that project. We serve the Sioux Falls School District on a number of financings as financial advisor. We started off there as the financial advisor back in the late 80s, early 90s and then underwrote some issues and now are working as their financial advisor again and hope to be in the market with an issue here for the school district shortly. And we've also served as financial advisor for various counties, cities and school districts across the state. And in other financings of these issuers, we have also served as underwriter without conflict of interest, which I think from a previous meeting, there was a lot of discussion about conflict of interest. And there really isn't a conflict of interest. I mean, I think the information that's been put out to you in a separate letter to you outlines how the MSRB, which is the Municipal Securities Rulemaking Board, has stipulated certain rules that we abide by so there aren't conflict of interest. And we are the only firm, as an underwriting firm, where we, you know, we are governed by the MSRB. We have an SRO, a self-regulating organization out there, not to mention that we also are governed because we are securities licensed by the NSAD and the SEC. I'm having technology issues today. I got thrown off my game because there's, there was a, I think there was a page missing.
Tom, we didn't send that page.
We didn't send that page. Okay, that's fine. I know why Woody had me go first. Oh, okay, thank you. Yeah, give me a mouse, I can handle that, I think. Give you some of the recent experience, other firm experience currently serves as an, we currently serve as the financial advisor for the South Dakota Building Authority. We've served, and in that capacity, we serve as a financial advisor or in sometimes in some capacity, we serve as their underwriter, but right now, we are the South Dakota Building Authority's financial advisor. We serve as financial advisors for other various state organizations and as it says there, we've also served as underwriter for those organizations. In North Dakota, we regularly and separately serve as financial advisor for underwriting for many issuers. I know in South Dakota or in North Dakota, at times, before the recent rule change, and it was, it was within the rules of the MSRB, we would serve as financial advisor, always with the understanding that we would be the underwriter for the bonds. There used to be the avenue by where you could serve as financial advisor up to a certain point and then when you got to the point where you could underwrite the bonds or the bonds were going to be issued, you could go ahead and resign as financial advisor and become the underwriter. It was always understood in those, in those type of transactions that Doherty would be the seller or the buyer of the bonds as the underwriter. And again, legal within the rules of the MSRB. In Minnesota, we have separately served as either the financial advisor or as the underwriter for the city of Minneapolis and we do serve as financial advisor, underwriter in many, many financings. And now we do that, we do that without doing the switching, as I mentioned, in North Dakota now. The rules prohibit that now, but we serve four different organizations, either as an underwriter on a separate issue or as a financial advisor on separate issues, but never on the same issue together. And that's never been our intent for the county here either. And even in 2007, when we worked as financial advisor for the county, it was always our understanding when we worked for Sioux that we would work as the financial advisor and that would be all we would work as, as the financial advisor. And that was our proposal to the county back in 2011, 2012 in March, or February 24th of 2012, when the RFP went out for this issue specifically, we said we would serve as the financial advisor and not as the underwriter. All right, so there's the slide I'm looking for. And again, just kind of to highlight this, investment banking firms are allowed to serve in both capacities as long as they are on different bond issues. I would point out, I don't have a slide there, but I did a run of Thompson Financial, which is an independent reporting organization, that in the top 25 financial advisors last year, a number of those financial advisors were underwriters too, such as Piper Jaffray, RBC, Baird, Robert Baird. Many of those firms serve as financial advisors and underwriters and are the largest in the A term that was talked about is, in the last presentation, was, you know, side of the table. We do not believe there's any sides to the table. You know, our clients are always at the head of this table. If you have a financial advisor and the financial advisor is the only person that you're working with, then you could always say that they're always on the other side of the table. They can make a phrase and say, "Well, we're, as your financial advisor, we're on your side of the table." But the side of the table argument only works if there's somebody on the other side of the table. If you're doing a competitive issue, the underwriters don't exist until you actually issue the bids and receive the bids from the underwriter, not even a part of the table process, that I think is alluded to when we talk about this side of the table. And again, we don't like to, we're not talking about sides of the table because we think that our client is always at the head of the table. We've always, you know, as your financial advisor, we've always provided you a fiduciary responsibility. Even as the underwriter, we can't say that we provided a financial fiduciary responsibility anymore. They've taken that term away from us as your underwriter. We can't use that word anymore, but I will tell you that your interests are our interests because they have to be. I mean, we don't stick around for 34-plus years or have an office in Sioux Falls for 29 years if your interests are not our interests. Municipal security rulesmaking, rules for the underwriters require fair dealings with issuers and Doherty upholds those obligations at all times. In 2012, J. In 2012, January, interest rates were very good at that time, and I'd like to try and put you back to that time a little bit, if you can think back maybe a little bit. I'm not sure what was going on in January 2012, but interest rates had hit a 40-year low, a 40-year low in interest rates. We tried to make the county aware of an opportunity by where they might be able to capture that 40-year low in the market, by introducing them to a, what they call a forward refunding. And a forward refunding is nothing more than a, an advance refunding, a refunding in advance of the call date of your bonds. Since you'd already had one advance refunding, which is what you're limited to under the IRS regulations, there's another way, there's a, there's a process called a forward refunding allows you to lock current interest rates for future use to capture current interest rates. So anyway, that was our intent, was just to make you aware of that, that that opportunity arose. Our number that's been, that's been in the paper and that was presented was that our present value number, and there's two numbers out there, present value and, and total savings, our present value number was about $900,000, but the key there in the present value number that was left out, I think of all the discussions, is that it was almost 9%, 9%. I've got a, I've got a PowerPoint presentation here by the GFOA, which is Government Finance Officer Association, and, and very well quoted many times by financial advisors, when you should use financial advisors, when you should not. The GFOA points out in a PowerPoint presentation they presented at the National GFOA Conference that 3%, 3% to 5% is a threshold for doing advanced refundings. Here we were in February, January of 2012, looking at almost 9% present value savings, three times the number the GFOA recommends. So I mean, you know, you're looking at that, and for us, we're saying, well, 3%, maybe this, or three times, maybe this is an opportunity we need to present to the county, a concept we need to present to the county. The other thing that they talked about in, in that presentation and at the GFOA Conference was hurdles, as far as how to evaluate that 3%. I will tell you, the hurdle that we saw, not only the 9%, the three times present value savings, was that your total savings exceeded $1 million. Wow, $1 million, that sounds like a lot of money. Again, another reason why we brought that. Present value number was more like 900,000, I know. Total savings was over $1 million. Again, another reason why the concept was brought to, to the county and was presented to the county, and the discussion process started. You know, at no time did we actually make a recommendation that the county should act on this. If anything, our intent was really to bring this to you so that you were aware of it before, from my perspective, before maybe a competitor decided, hey, Dougherty's falling asleep at the wheel here, you know, maybe this is a good idea for a forward refunding, and they come in, and then they have the idea, and then I'm battling, oh, well, Dougherty was, you know, sleeping at the switch. So I'm six and one, half a dozen the other here, now in hindsight. So that was the, that was the reason why. My thought is, that if you're going to give us 2020 hindsight is, that we would not have acted on that proposal at that particular time, knowing what was going on with the Fed, and that we would have just maintained the process, maybe gotten action to move ahead, because this is what the whole discussion is about, I think, currently, is that the process takes a little bit of time to get going. And you just can't act one day to try and capture interest rates tomorrow. You have to have, there's a process, there's at least a two-month process to get all the documents and everything ready to get into the market, at least. So you're looking at this process, and I think what, what we would have done is, we would have waited, and we would have continued to monitor the situation if the county decided they wanted to do this, and just watch how interest rates go. I'll tell you, we probably would have been back if we'd gotten the okay, probably would have been back in thinking 40-year lows were really good in interest rates. When November hit of last year, and we hit 45, some people said 50-year, but if you look at the MMD, we're probably at 40, 45-year lows in interest rates in November of last year, end of November, early December. You know, if we had gotten the okay, we probably would have came back to the county at that time and maybe said, hey, maybe, you know, 45-year lows, is it going to get any lower than this, guys? You know, maybe, and guys, I mean generic, generic instance, sorry. You know, maybe that would have been the time. So that's, that was the intent. Right now, I'll tell you, interest rates have gone up over, even on your 2021, has gone up over 50 basis points since then. So, that was the intent, that was, that's the mentality, that's what was going through my mind and through Woody's mind, and Woody's standing up here, so he probably has some other comments about that.
I'll just make one short one, and that is that, as the, when, when you go to investors and you want them to guarantee a rate, two years, which is what they would have been doing back then, just about, you'd be, what they would want as a premium to lock that in would be different than if it was done a year, like in November of this last year, you would have paid less of a premium to do that. But obviously, an investor needs some advantage there, and I guarantee you the current interest rate.
Yep, so there's, I mean, as Woody mentioned, so there is, there is a little premium that you have to pay to lock in on a forward refunding. And that, as you went on, go on, it would decrease. That's why if you wait until the actual call date, if you have the rates you would have had in November, and I could have guaranteed that, or any FA could have guaranteed that, we would have just said, hey, let's wait until November or December when your bonds are callable, and let's just issue bonds at that time at those rates. Again, that's, nobody knows that, and interest rates have actually gone up since then. So, you know, the crystal ball hasn't been perfect. Where's the fine line? I don't know. I mean, we just bring the information to the county, and I think that's a philosophical difference that we have also, is that, you know, our main competitor, I guess you could say in this, would like to deal with and behind closed doors with the auditor, whereas, you know, when we have an idea, we bring it to the auditor, but you guys hear about it. You know, it's not just a decision that's made offline somewhere not to act on something, you know, you guys hear about it. So anyway, just a little more background about Dougherty. You know, this, Dougherty's has been involved again, since 1992, well, actually, the sale-leaseback language has been around longer than that. Woody worked with the sale-leaseback approach with the Civic Center out in Rapid City back in the 70s, and of course, that is the basis for the county's financing. And Dougherty was involved in that. And I think without it, most likely, every issue the county would have right now would have to be done by an election. Now, unlike school district elections, yours is a 50%, but still, a very cumbersome way of doing business, if the, if the project is needed. And it's been very, a very good process by which you have used to build many of your So again, why hire Dougherty and Company as your financial advisor? Well, we have the most experience working with the county as an FA or as an underwriter with this type of financing. There is a uniqueness about this financing that we bring to this and understand it, is that at the end of the day, your bonds, even though we've figured out a way to label them limited tax, general obligation, the last word in that is certificates. And in the marketplace, certificates is always seen as some type of annual appropriation. At one time, your bonds were called certificates of participation, which were huge red flags, and still are in the marketplace, and we've managed to eliminate a couple of those words, but we still have to use the word certificates. But that still is, tends to be a red flag. We've conveyed to the public, to the buying public, to the institutional investors, that your certificates are on a non-cancelable lease, so they're not true certificates, as the marketplace might understand certificates, meaning annual appropriation. You have to appropriate, oh, I thought Woody was going to make a move up here. Because he knows that stuff inside and out. We have more experience than any other firm serving financial advisors in the state. We believe our cost for our services as financial would be less. And we also understand, or hope you understand, that, you know, we, we have a brick-and-mortar building, not building, but we rent an office here. You know, we, we have six people in our office. You know, sending work to Minneapolis or Philadelphia is, you know, doesn't help our office at all. I think there was comments that Dougherty would still have a role, you know, even if, even if PFM was hired, or another financial advisor was hired, and we bid on the bonds, and we won those bonds off our competitive desk, that doesn't give us any benefit to the Sioux Falls office. You know, they don't pay our bills, the competitive desk is a separate desk and a separate entity within Dougherty and Company. So, you know, we would hope that you would hire, hire Dougherty and Company as your FA. I think from our proposal in last year, we showed that our fees were better than our competitor, and I think that's important, that shouldn't be lost. We have the experience, and we have, you know, our fees were the least. And I think in a, in a situation where an FA will ask for bids from underwriters, and they judge underwriters on the value of those bids, they take the, they take the lowest interest rate or, or the highest bid, because it's an inverse usually, so the highest bid usually wins, because that would produce the lowest interest rate. When they judge underwriters on that capability, I think that, I think that issuing entities, you know, should use that same burden on FAs. And if we are the cheapest FA, then, then we would hope that you retain us, especially if the, if the FA has the most experience and, and is familiar with the organization that's doing the issuing. Did you have any comments, Woody?
No, we'll answer any questions.
Tom, are you done with your presentation?
I am done, sorry. Did I take too long?
No, 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 that's fine. Does anyone have any questions for Tom or for Woody? Any comments? Commissioner Kelly?
Tom, on this one, you're saying if, if you were hired, I assume we're talking about the JL, the forward, forward funding?
No.
No, and we haven't really, really talked about that. I guess I, you know, and something that was in the paper too, was that we, you know, our, our initial numbers of 900,000 present value or $1 million, I mean, that fluctuates. So our numbers today will be the same numbers as PFM. The only difference will be, you know, how much you pay the organization that's going to be your FA. That's really the only difference.
Okay, and this is for unassigned refund?
Right, this would be, I mean, this would still, we've gone beyond that period where we would do, do that forward refunding. We're, we're to the point of where we would do a, a current refunding, and you can do a current refunding up to 90 days prior to your call date. So that's why, you know, this is, you know, coming to you right now, even though your bonds are not callable until December 1 of this year, you, you get 90 days prior to that. You can typically lock interest rates, we could bid this out and lock interest rates 30 to 60 days prior to that. So you can see how we can back into the timeframe that's being discussed right now, as far as, you know, when you could be in the market, and when action has to be taken by you to move forward. But our savings would not be the nine, it'd be greater than that, and would be whatever numbers that Bob was quoting you, I would say ours would be the same, because it, it's going to be a function of what the underwriters bid, and the bidders are going to be the same, whether you hire Dougherty and Company or PFM. I'd like to say that we're going to get more bidders than they will, because we have more attention to detail, and, and that's one thing that we will do, but, you know, I can't say that.
But if you were the FA on this, you would not be the, you would not be bidding on the?
We would not be bidding on the bonds.
Okay, that's kind of, thank you.
Right. And again, that's, that, I would like to clear that up, some disinformation, again. We have never bid, at least our office has never bid on any of the bonds that we've been FA, acting as FA on, whether that be for the city of Sioux Falls, which I think is where some of this disinformation came from, or Sioux Falls School District, which I think they understand it completely, because we've worked as an FA for them for a number of years and never have bid on any of their bonds, and just worked as an FA and for the county, when we did the county deal in 2007.
There is no conflict.
I, I see no conflict, conflict of interest that may have been discussed previously.
One other thing related to that conflict question sort of is, there was this great reacted letter that was presented as part of the materials at your last meeting. And I would just like to make it very clear, that that letter had nothing to do with that firm that whoever been reacted, been blacked out, had ever served as an FA to somebody. That is a letter that every underwriter on every financing they do must give to their client. And that doesn't matter whether they're hired directly as an underwriter by the county or as, on, for a negotiated deal, or whether they're hired as an underwriter as a result of competitive bids. That same basic identical letter has to go to the issuer. And if you have a competitive bid, and you have five underwriters, typically, all five are going to give that letter to the issuer.
Commissioner Barth?
Tom and Woody, I guess, do you see that being a financial advisor is preferable to an entity like the county as opposed to being the underwriter? Certainly, there are advocates for the financial advisor as opposed to, because there's a lack of perceived conflict of interest.
Because we are prohibited by the rules of the MSRB to advocate or to advise a county or any issuer not to hire a financial advisor. Your question presents a little bit of a dilemma. Okay? But I will tell you this, that in the recent bond buyer, there was an analysis done of competitive versus negotiated sales. You might wish to look at that, the bond buyer, and, because the finding in that was that currently negotiated, the, the costs associated with the negotiated sale, the sale price is generally less than on a competitive.
Mr. Chair, if I could, so on a, on a negotiated sale, you would lock somebody in on a deal, whereas on an auctioned situation, that could be 14 days out, and you wouldn't know what the, what the interest was going to be until it actually happened, right?
Well, I don't know, it's 14 days out, I mean, they'll, normally, the bids are received that day, so they will, they will write their bids that day. It's not that they'll write their bids 14 days ahead and then expect them to, to hold over those 14 days. You know, our, I guess, we, we could, we can talk about negotiated competitive, but I guess we've come in here with the idea that, that, that Bob, Mr. Litz, has, has really headed down this road where he'd like to do a competitive offering. And if that's what he wants to do, you know, we want to be his financial advisor, we want to be the county's financial advisor, because to do a competitive deal, you need a financial advisor. If you do a competitive deal, and we're not your financial advisor, as I pointed out, we, we won't have a role in this, even if our desk bids on it. We, Dougherty, Dougherty Sioux Falls, Dougherty Office and First Financial Center downtown, the six employees, we won't have a role, we won't play a role in this at all.
Even on a negotiated, Jeff, the rate is not fixed when you hire. We don't, if you hired someone as a underwriter, they don't guarantee you what rate that is going to be at until some point down the line after the bids, after they've been in the marketplace, they have made some attempt to sell and, and maybe get all, most of the bonds sort of spoken for, and then they've committed an interest rate. So I mean, which may be, you know, 14 days, you know, they might be working that for 14 days.
Sure.
But they don't have to, but the difference being is on a negotiated, they basically know what the rate is when they lock that in, because they have enough of the bonds sold, or they take the risk on the rest. Where on negotiated, and what the bond buyer article says is that on a, on a competitive bid, people, firms, because of interest rates, are needing to lock in some protection if interest rates move before they can sell them. I mean, that, and...
I think I followed up some of that.
Any other questions? Commissioner Beckus?
Well, from what I see, I see two issues. The first one is the relationship between financial advising, and then you have the underwriting. And at a certain point, if you choose to be the financial advisor, you're going to have to decide, if you're going to bid, you're going to be the underwriter, that's where you're going to have to step back.
No, we could not.
We, as, if we were hired as financial advisor, we would have, we would have already made that decision, we're not going to bid.
All right, okay. Then the second issue is competitive bid versus negotiated sales. And there was a presentation here where we had several individuals come forward and talk about the benefits of competitive bids versus the negotiated sales, and that, you know, according to the studies and the examples that they had presented, they could show that in hindsight, it's better financial investment by using taxpayer dollars to go with the competitive bid. The reason why is because we get better value. But I also know the flip side of that, is that, for example, a bond issuance from Minniamah County, even compared to the Sioux Falls School District, is going to be much smaller. And so when you have smaller sales, sometimes that becomes an issue on whether or not you're going to get the kind of investors you want in a competitive process as opposed to a negotiated sale. Is that correct?
I think that's correct. I think where, where you really see, and Woody's touched on it a little bit, is that, and the bond buyer touched on it too, is that in today's markets, as opposed to 20, 30, even 40 years ago, is that... 30, even 40 years ago, is that there's a lot of uncertainty in the market. The market can move and wipe out a trade, a trader will bid on these bonds if you're doing a competitive deal. The trader is integral in this and they have to write the scale. The trader is writing the scale at his best guess in a competitive deal of where his salesman can sell the bonds in a competitive process. So he's guessing on that day where interest rates are going to go. And you can see probably how well that's gone for some traders out there, you know, losing billions of dollars. It's, it's a fine art, but we think because of the, the volatility in the market, especially currently in the market, that traders are typically putting some premium in there, and I think the bond buyer talks about that a little bit, a little bit of a premium in there to guard against any fluctuation in interest rates out there. And then what's really interesting is, and we didn't cover it here, is that you could, you can go onto the Emma site and see how this plays out. And there are many times on the Emma site where you can see where a, a competitive bid has been won and then once the award has been made, those bonds are trading at a premium on that site. Because basically the, the large underwriter, whether it be JP Morgan or some other large underwriter, they're, they're basically what they call streeting the bonds, they're showing them to the streets and taking, taking their money out of the deal and, you know, to cover, to cover their, any loss that they might have, they're just streeting them and selling them and then you're seeing these bonds that are turning over and being sold at a premium. So you're seeing some of that on Emma. Actually, Emma has been, I think, I wouldn't say a lifesaver, but Emma's been very good at showing how, on a competitive deal, how bonds can actually flip. The, the, the argument was on a negotiated issue that bonds were being flipped. You were selling them to your buddy out there and he was selling, buying them at a really, really high or low price, high yield, and then he was flipping them later. Well, what you're seeing is, that's not the case. Whoever's buying on a negotiated sale are, you're dealing with end users, you're dealing with people that want the bonds and they're going to hold them hopefully till maturity. What you see on the competitive side is you see buyers of those bonds that deal in bonds and they're, they're trading bonds, they're trying to make money by trading, they're making profit off of trading those bonds. So once they get the bonds, they're streeting them and trying to make a, a dollar on streeting those bonds, whether at a, at a discount or a premium, they're trying to make their money off of getting rid of the bonds as fast as they can. And you see that turnover that's like, you know, multiple times what a negotiated sale is.
I would just add, if anybody wants to know, the, the article is in the Bond Buyer for Wednesday, May 29, 2013, if anybody wants to go and, and look it up. Because it is an interesting analysis. Because one of the historical analysis that was done, they took all underwritings that were done on, on a, you know, negotiated sale and compared it to those issues that were done on competitive sale. Well, there's a lot of negotiated sales that were done on non-rated type bonds, okay, that do sell at a higher premium or a lower even rated bond. And so if, if the analysis was solely done on that basis, it's going to reflect a higher interest rate to some extent because of the type of bonds and the creditworthiness of the bonds. Because typically, GO type bonds are the ones most likely to be sold on a competitive sale.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
So, I am done.
I have one more question.
Certainly.
So in 2012, you guys came forward at least with the idea of the forward, I think, what was the term, forward reissue?
Forward refunding.
Forward refunding. And you never got any response back from the county?
Well, what we got back, well...
Okay.
A request for FA that there was no action done on, and there was really, yeah, no, no follow-through after that because there was a lot of discussion about FA work and whether or not FA needed to be involved and, and again, it just kind of, it kind of died for lack of interest.
Well, that's fair. Okay, that's fair. Category is it that way?
I would just add, one thing to that is typically a forward type refunding is one of those that would not have been done by means of a competitive sale because it really needs to be structured to a particular investor and it's worked and negotiated with a series of investors trying to get the, the best deal out of the contract and you're, and they're providing the contract, okay? Typically, that they want the county to agree to. So I mean, most of those are done with, by an underwriter and not through an FA.
Yep.
Thank you for the questions. Are there any other questions? Tom and what do you think?
I have one other, I have one other time, man. And that is...
Is this your aerobic program?
Yeah. Regardless of whether you're an underwriter or a financial advisor, you make, primarily make your money when an issuer sells bonds.
Correct. And then I, again, to just clarify the savings, our savings today would be, you know, whatever the savings are out there, whether it be $2 million, a million and a half, interest rates have gone up about 20 basis points, 25 basis points in the last three weeks on the 2020, which is the longest side of your maturity. So interest rates have changed, you have lost savings, you know, over the last three weeks or so. And our savings would be the same as PFM or any other FA that does competitive bids. I mean, again, I'd like to say that we could get a, a ton more bidders on it, maybe we can, and that would drive the, the price up and the yield down even more, but for the most part, the bidders are going to be what the bidders are when you do a competitive sale. So the only difference is how much you're going to pay your FA. And we came in with the lowest fee back in 2012 and if the county's going to hire an FA, we'd like to, we'd like to adhere to that same RFP so the county doesn't have to go out and do another RFP to save some time and ask them to hire us based on those fees and our experience and our relation, past relationship that we've had with the county and other issuers in the state. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. I would just say that we do appreciate, oh, Commissioner Hybarger, I'm sorry.
Woody said something that just made me, I would, wanted to ask, do you guys go on an hourly rate or do you go on by a percentage of what the bond sales are?
Well, normally we, we go with a flat fee, which is what we submitted to the county in the RFP for the bond issue. But there is, if, if there was work outside of the RFP, we, we could definitely work with that. I can't remember, I assume we probably had a flat or a, a rate in there in case there was some additional work.
Okay.
But I will tell you, well, I won't tell you that.
Okay. Thanks.
This was based upon a, basically a flat fee.
Okay.
Depends on the million dollar. And typically on a refunding, that is what really is done.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Again, thank you for coming. Again, I want to apologize to your firm because I understand you did not get the notice that was sent out last week until you actually arrived back from vacation and found out that that was going to happen on the, whatever date that was.
The day after.
The day after, okay.
After the holiday.
Yeah, and we apologize for that. That's not the way we want to do business. The other thing is, is a lot of the conversation that's been happening in the media has not been quote accurate, so this has been a real learning experience for all of us. This is a very specialized business, to say the least. It doesn't happen on a daily basis and you guys have been part of the educational process. I don't think we're here to make a decision today, we're here to listen to your presentation and then at some point decide how we're going to move forward with this. And we appreciate your input. I think we have a lot of things to consider before we make a final decision, but certainly we appreciate the service.
If you do have, I don't know if you had copies of the proposal that we submitted in 2012, I think the commission probably did receive copies of that, and I would encourage you to look back at that if you, with a review of that.
Yeah, we did, and I did see a copy of that just recently and, and, you know, what we didn't do in January of 2012 kind of reminds me of wish, of wishing that I had bought Microsoft stock 35 years ago. We can't change it, we're going to have to move forward and we're going to try to make a good decision in the next few weeks because frankly, not only do we have bonds that maybe could be refunded or refinanced, but the other issue is, is that we have some construction projects that are coming up and all of this is going to have to balance in our budget and we need to figure out how that's going to work. So we will be part of that discussions shortly, so thank you again for your presentation.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I just wonder if our auditor would care to ask a question or...
I think we have to go with the presentation. I don't know that this is going to be a...
Thank you.
...an agenda item for discussion or for any kind of decision-making process. I'd like to go to item number 11.
Item 11 is consider a bid award for Project MC 149 BM-13, profile and overlay of four miles of county highway 149 and authorize the chairman to sign contracts. Bids open June 5th. D.J. Boothby.
Good morning, Commissioners, D.J. Boothby, Highway Superintendent. Pursuant to your authorization, the Highway Department opened bids for the 149 overlay on June 5th. We received three bids and one other bid packet with a no bid. The low bidder was blacktop paving, which is the asphalt paving part of Sioux Falls construction. The bids were all pretty tight, within $15,000 or so, and they were very, very close bids, much lower than our engineer's estimate of $892,000. The low bid was $643,864.20 by blacktop paving, and so I encourage you today to authorize the chairman to sign the contract with blacktop paving.
Thank you, D.J. Any questions for D.J.?
Make a motion to approve that, but I do have a question.
Do we need a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, Commissioner Barth?
Why do you think that Merlin Royce chose not to bid on this?
You know, I could, I could speculate over a cup of coffee after the meeting, but I did not hear any feedback from Merlin Royce.
Okay, thanks.
If I might, I have one question, D.J. Since the bids have come, you know, $230,000 less than what projections were, is there additional roads that are going to be blacktop or are you going to use that for a, quote, another deep highway item?
We have a lengthy list of, of shelved projects that we would like to complete and will probably be coming to the commission towards the end of the summer, midsummer, requesting approval for those projects, but right now they do not include overlaying additional work.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions for D.J.? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion unanimously passes.
Item 12 is to authorize the chairman to sign South Dakota Department of Transportation work order for consultant services for countywide sign replacement project. D.J. Boothby.
Again, Commissioners, D.J. Boothby, Highway Superintendent. As a result of a conversation that was had yesterday between Commissioner Hybarger and one of the townships, we had an additional township request participate in this program. And after discussing with the Department of Transportation earlier today, they're going to go back to the consultant and renegotiate their fee, which means that the contractor agreement that you have before you today is no longer going to be the one that will be used. And so we will, we would like to table this item for further consideration in the next couple of weeks.
Move to table.
Second with a comment.
Motion and a second to table, Commissioner Hybarger.
I just thank you, D.J., for working with those people. I think there was a little bit, not really misunderstanding, but they weren't quite sure the direction they were going in. I think they got their questions all answered and we're happy to be able to get back on board with what was going on, so thank you for your work on that.
Thank you. Thank you for your flexibility. One day turnaround in some of these is not quite fair and similar to what we saw in the financial advisor conversation, you know, people need to have the opportunity to express themselves, so thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Item 13.
We didn't get a vote on that motion.
Oh, you keep track of this?
Yeah.
That's a tough job.
I'm trying.
I'm sorry, those in favor of, of deferring or tabling item 12 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion unanimously passes. Thank you, D.J.
Item 13 is consider a motion to accept 2013 grant award from the South Dakota Weed and Pest Control Commission and to authorize signature to the letter of agreement between Minnehaw County Weed and Pest Board and the South Dakota Weed and Pest Control Commission. Ralph Hammer.
Good morning, Commissioners, Ralph Hammer, Weed Supervisor. There's a grant money from the Weed and Pest Commission that we use to help offset chemical The letter of agreement for next year will be for $6,300 plus any other counties that decide to sit out of the grant program.
Any questions for Ralph? Is there a motion to approve?
Move approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve and second that. Those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, nay, motion unanimously passes. Thanks for your patience.
Item 14 is a briefing by Minnehaw County Planning and Zoning to consider proposed resolution to increase building permit fees. Bomb consideration will be on June 18th. Scott Anderson.
Yes, Scott Anderson, Minnehaw County Planning Department. I prepared a short briefing memo for you. Today's an informational item. As you know, we recently adopted or readopted the 2012 IBC, the International Building Code, and periodically we revisit the schedule, which we use to calculate building permit fees and raise that periodically. The last time that we raised our fees were in 2011, and so it's time to look at those, the fees and to give you an idea of how we use this information, and I'll put it on What we normally do is we take a, we use a per square foot rate and we, to make it fair to all parties, we use that per square foot rate and we calculate the amount of, of building that's being constructed, and that gives us an overall value. And then we take for residential, residential construction, we take 0.4% of that. And likewise, we do the same thing with farming, with agricultural, and it's 0.3% of that. And that is the, that's the, the method that we use for calculating the building permit fee. So we are proposing to increase the rate which we use to calculate the valuation by 1%. And I prepared a, an example for illustrative purposes. On a 1,500 square foot house with an unfinished basement and an attached double-stall garage, the current value we would indicate for that structure would be $186,057. That is what is a average or a basis, and then we would take 0.4% of that, the building permit would be $744.22. With the proposed change that we're suggesting, the new building permit rate would calculate that house at $188,970 for a building permit fee of $755.88, resulting in an increase of $11.66 on a fairly nice-sized house. The reason we do these periodic and, uh, periodic rate increases is so we don't have in four or five years a huge rate. And I have been working with the Home Builders Association and I've discussed this with Mr., anyway, the Todd.
Mosky.
Yes, Todd. And if you noticed on the resolution, I'm asking this become effective August 1st. That gives us time to post it on the internet, work, continue to work with the home builders so they can, so the builders out there can calculate this in their estimates, so. Today's informational only, I'm asking that I bring this next week for a final adoption. Be glad to answer any questions you might have.
So anybody have any questions for Scott? Commissioner Kelly?
We have no, on commercial, we have no cap. The building permit is, if it's a $10 million building, there's no cap on it, is that correct?
That's right. There's no cap on any of our building permits. It's all based on evaluation.
And do I understand the city does have a cap?
Um, they may. I am unaware if they do or not. I, I'd have to research if they have a cap or not.
Thank you. Other questions for Scott? Scott, thanks for coming. We'll see you next week for final vote.
Item 15 is consider a motion to authorize the acceptance of a $50,000 grant through the South Dakota Department of Health to purchase a mass fatality trailer and associated supplies and equipment and authorize the chairman to sign a grant agreement. Doug Blunker.
Good morning, Commissioners, Doug Blunker, Minnehaw County Emergency Management. As you know, our office coordinates with many different agencies within the area here for many types of disaster emergency situations, and our office has received a grant for $50,000 for the purchase and maintenance and equipment for a mass casualty trailer should we have a large disaster happen within the region or within the state which would be deployed. I'm asking that the... I'm asking that the commission sign the agreement with Minnehaw County and the state for the acceptance of this grant. Also, should you have questions, Dr. Snell is here and he has, can answer questions. I know he has an appointment at 10:30, so...
Oh.
Any questions for Doug or Dr. Snell?
Well, in the briefing memo, it calls it a mass fatality trailer. You said casualty.
Or, I'm sorry.
So this isn't going to be like a mash unit. We're talking about basically a refrigerated trailer.
Exactly.
No, it's not a refrigerated trailer.
Okay.
What it is, it's a unit that we can...
I think you're going to have to come to the mic and start over, so...
And I barely recognize you.
It's a unit that we can use out in the field to do examinations. Also, we're setting up so that we can do embalmings. As an example, in Alabama, they had a tornado that came through and it, only, only eight people died, but the problem was it wiped out all the funeral homes. So their unit came in and provided embalming services for that community until one of the funeral homes could be back up and running. So, in the morgue that we're in, we can do two people, but only can store five. The hospital would be overrun if we had 10 or more people. So this unit allows us to go where the incident is and operate in that area. It's not refrigerated, we have a separate trailer in the state we could bring in for that purpose. It is air-conditioned heated though, so that we can work in there. This would allow us to do this instead of setting up in a warehouse somewheres or something like that, you never would know what kind of facilities you would have. This gives us a defined work area, all the supplies will be maintained in that, and would let us do everything from the field recover all the way to the release to the funeral home or, as I said, embalming and then final internment as well, so...
May I ask another question?
Certainly.
So in a case of a homicide or something like that, could this trailer be hauled there to allow you to do an autopsy out in rural South Dakota somewhere if necessary?
That's a possibility. The problem is it's not set up for that type of exam. This is set up for a mass fatality where we do a specific style of exam. The materials that we would need to be able to run and operate for homicide would not be in this unit. I'm going to say that I would not want to do it in this unit. It would not be in the best interest of the community for us to use this unit for that.
All right. Okay. Thanks, Doctor.
Commissioner Hybarger.
This might be for Doug too. Good morning. Just, this is the one unit that will be for the whole state of South Dakota. It's like, not like Pennington's is going to have one and we're going to have one, we will have one for the state of South Dakota, it'll just happen to be stored in Minnehaw County.
Correct.
It's predominantly for us and for this side of the state, but if for some reason they need it, we could go there with the unit. They have the actual refrigerated unit that I referred to.
Okay.
So they have the refrigerate, I think it can store what, 10 or 12 bodies, something like that, and it sits on that side. So if we needed it over here, it would come over here. Of course, now, on the eastern side of the state, I would be deployed with the unit. If it goes to the west side, I would not go with the unit.
They do have a question too. Commissioner Barth.
Doug, do we have a place to store this trailer and, you know, how are we set up for the other disaster things like body bags and stuff?
Body bags, there's a supply of that in. At this point, I've spoken with Lynn DeYoung, our director, we will be, of course, be looking for storage for that. However, one thing is asked me to advise the commission is that, in looking at a possible new facility for emergency management and DOT unit, we have designated a specific spot in that where that could be stored at. So, we wanted to emphasize that to the commission.
Commissioner Hybarger.
I have one more question. When, when do we expect this unit to be in possession?
This would be, I believe the grant has to be finalized by June of next year, so we would be looking at purchasing a trailer fairly soon and then purchasing the equipment and supply within the next year.
Make a motion to authorize the acceptance of this grant for a mass fatality trailer and associated supplies.
Second. A motion and a second. Are there any other questions? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion unanimously passes. Thank you for coming. Hope you make your appointment.
Yeah.
Item 16 is to authorize the chairman to sign amendment number two to the agreement between Minnehaw County and the South Dakota Department of Social Services, Community Behavioral Health for clinically managed residential detoxification services. Ken McFarland.
Commissioners, you might remember that in our old contract that ran from June 1 of 2012 through May 31st of 2013, our original contract with the state was to receive $126,210 worth of funds. Back in March of 2013, we signed an amendment that readjusted that total based on the availability of state funds, that dropped that down to $96,210 through May 31st. Now, the state, as they're ending their fiscal year and looking at what kind of money is available to the program, they've identified another $10,000 that they could put towards reimbursing the county for our work with detox patients, and they have sent us an amendment, amendment number two, there we can bill up to $106,210. And so, we would ask, this has been reviewed by Carol and the folks over at CCS, and we would recommend that your approval. And again, this will just allow, we've continued to bill once we hit our ceiling, and this will just allow us to access those additional dollars through that time period.
Thank you, Ken. Any other questions for Ken?
I'll make the motion.
Motion and a second to, I'm assuming to approve the contract?
Yes, I should have said that.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion unanimously passes. Thank you.
Item 17, or Minnehaw County Commissioner Liaison Reports.
Does anyone have any liaison comments to make this morning? We'll go to item 18, new business. Anyone have any new business? 19 is old business. If not, we need to go to, into executive session for both contract negotiations and a legal issue. I would like a motion to recess into legal, not to legal, to executive.
And a personnel, and a personnel matter, I'd like to...
Oh, okay, and a personnel matter. I'd like a few minutes to sign some contracts, so we'll be back here at 10:25. Those in favor of going into exec session for contract, legal, and personnel?
I'll make, I'll make a motion.
I'm sorry, I thought Jeff did.
Nope, but I did now.
Okay, I apologize. We have a motion and a second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Thank you. See you back here at...